You're recording?
Okay, so next, we bring up June Marie Bond, who's our moderator. If I could please ask each of the candidates to come up here, candidates who are running for City Council, and as you're coming up, I'd like to welcome you all this afternoon. We have another great turnout for our forum, and thank you all for being here. As you know, there's only one council position up for election this year.
Two.
No, well, there you go. Want to make sure you want your toes, guys. Good, I'll be a quick. We're fortunate to have all four candidates who are running for election go council seat, one of whom is an incumbent, one of whom is a former council member, and the other two are new to the election process. So as they get seated, come on up. Look at the green day. We got the memo. You're in green, you get extra chocolate. Seated from my left is John Duncan, Carrie Downey, who's a former council member, Marvin Knight, who's our incumbent, and Pele Aloha Estelle. I'm going to very briefly go over the rules of engagement. This information was shared with each one of them ahead of time, but I thought it best to share with you. To be fair to all the candidates in answering questions, their names were drawn randomly, and that's how we determined the seating order here. Four questions will be asked at each candidate. The first question was shared with each one of them in advance, but the other three questions are new to them. They're going to have two minutes to answer each of the questions. First question's going to be asked alphabetically by last name, then I'll ask from my left to the right, my right to the left, and then to the right. We have timekeepers here in front who will give each one of the candidates notice when they have 20 seconds, 10 seconds, and then a stop sign will go up. Thank you, Vanna White. So now, without further ado, I'd like to ask the first question. Please introduce yourself and describe the background, education, experience, service, or skills that you have that make you uniquely qualified to serve on the Coronado City Council. And I'll start alphabetically with Carrie Downey.
Good afternoon, Rotarians. Thank you very much for inviting us. I'm Carrie Downey, and I've had the honor of having served as your councilperson at three previous times, first in 2004, then in 2008, and then again in 2014. So I haven't served you since 2018, and I think my experience as a previous council member alone qualifies to serve you again. But the reason I ran the first time and continue to is I have experience in my legal practice. I'm an attorney with a master's of law in addition in environmental and land use planning, and for the past 20 years, I have been serving as an attorney for other government agencies, agencies that produce energy in California. I served our government as the United States Navy Judge Advocate General for 10 years, six of those here at North Island. I helped combine at the time the Naval Ambig Base Legal Department with the North Island Legal Department, so we became naval-based Coronado. And my experiences both in my Navy time and in my civilian law practice also have given me insight in many issues that come before the Coronado City Council. I have been a resident of Coronado since 1994. I am married, I have five children, three daughters who went through our school system from K through 12, and I've had an opportunity as both a renter in the Kayes, a homeowner in the Village, and my original house in Coronado, I rent out to military families. So I understand what it's like to try and rent in this economy, try to be a good landlord in this economy, and help our community figure out what we should be doing for zoning. And so based on all of my experiences, I believe I am very well qualified to serve as your Coronado City Councilwoman again. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. John Duncan.
Good afternoon. I'm a strong believer in public service and giving back to the community. In 2020, I was appointed to serve on the Coronado Civil Service Commission and elected Chair. From 2016 to 2019, I served on Coronado's Bicycle Advisory Committee, including a term as Vice Chair. These experiences have been valuable in learning about our community and the issues we face regarding transportation, tourism, and how the city operates in regard to hiring, paying, and when necessary disciplining employees. I'm very familiar with how committees and commissions work, including the Robert Rules of Order as well as the Brown Act. I'm a Director on the Board of Directors of the Coronado Historical Association. I serve as Chair of the Heritage Investment and Building Committees. I'm also a candidate dedicated to the safety of our community. I'm a Director on the Board of Directors of the FBI Citizens Alumni Academy and serve as Chair of the Governance Committee and the Academy Committee. For my service this year, I received recognition from the FBI stating, quote, "Your dedication is above and beyond, and it's individuals like you who helped the FBI meeting our mission." I've included my SAC coin as recognition of your excellence and leadership. I also attended the Coronado Citizens Police Academy in 2016. Further, I volunteered in Coronado for more than a decade coaching youth sports and serving on boards of youth sports leagues. In my professional life, I'm an attorney licensed to practice law in multiple states, and I spent two decades as a managing partner of a large firm with 12 offices and hundreds of attorneys and employees. My position gave me vast experience in managing multimillion-dollar budgets, real estate and assets, as well as experiencing complex contract, lease, and insurance issues. In all my roles, I seek to be a hard-working problem solver who is analytical and committed to achieving the best possible results in a positive and civil fashion. Thank you.
Next, Pele Aloha Estelle.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, fellow Rotarians. It is really an honor to be here, and I see a lot of fellow classmates from high school, which is always exciting, and I'm actually a fourth-generation Coronado family resident, so it's always wonderful to see familiar faces and families here. And I am, my daughter's in sixth grade here at Coronado Middle School, and I have what I would call a robust background. I'm very passionate about civic duty and public service. I have worked a lot in public policy, Alzheimer's Association, as well as Southern Caregiver Resource Center. I've worked on a lot of campaigns locally, nationally, and within lobbying, advocacy, and all the above, and really within kind of that public service community. Actually, as I was sitting here, I was remembering growing up, and my grandfather's a Rotarian in Riverside, and I went to those meetings a lot ironically. And it was wonderful to be able to serve within that community and travel within the Rotary Club growing up, so since the age of 14 and up. And I, my background, I did environmental studies for school at UCSB and my master's in global leadership at USD, and I'm currently working towards my doctorate in public policy. I really, I would say my background is very big on being able to serve the public and really trying to move us forward. I really pride myself in our town. It means a lot to me, and where I want to go is to be able to help us be a role model city in what we do and to be able to help other cities to know what it's like to really involve our civic duty within our community. And I was recently endorsed by the President of the Ocean Foundation in Washington, D.C. for this campaign, and I'm really looking forward to being able to serve our community. Thank you.
And now Marvin Knight.
Thank you, President Luan and the Coronado Rotary for hosting this forum. It's always a great pleasure to share and hear Rotarian concerns. I'm seeking reelection to continue the focus on fundamental city services. Our city has serious underground infrastructure issues, and we need to keep our staff and resources focused on ensuring we upgrade pump stations, renovate underground piping, and move power lines underground while we also maintain a high-quality public safety, address our traffic issues, and manage our resources. The Navy brought me to Coronado in 1988, and I've kept a home here ever since. After completing an active-duty career as a Navy Explosive Ordnance Disposal Officer, I've immersed myself in our community. I've served on the Coronado Planning Commission, the Community Emergency Response Team, the Street Treat Committee, and I'm currently serving on your City Council. In addition to our Rotary Club, I also serve as a nonprofit leader in the Military Officers' Association and our VFW Post, and as an active member in many Coronado organizations. My degree is in Architecture and Mechanical Engineering, giving me some skills to understand and provide educated policy guidance on our infrastructure challenges. We need to continue to repair and upgrade our city infrastructure to prevent flooding and emergency repairs like we've seen in the ferry landing and in Country Club in recent years. For the Navy vets, our SNIPS have serious PMS issues. Having Navy experience on the council, it's important as we work on the Navy issues such as relinquishment, aircraft noise, and traffic. My experience in emergency response, interagency planning as an EMT, and my legal education helped me focus the staff on public safety and disaster planning issues. After all, my Rotary classification is contingency planning. Raised by depressionary parents, I have conservative financial values, and I zeal to see work to make sure that we use our city resources wisely. I will continue to provide service above self on our council in order to keep Coronado a special place.
So in the essence of time, let's hold applause for the remaining questions to the end. So now for my second question, I'll start on the far left. In your estimation, what are the top three challenges facing the city of Coronado today? First, identify the top three challenges, and then explain which one of those is the top priority for you and how you would go about addressing that particular challenge. So I'll start with you, John.
Thank you very much for the question. I love that I no longer have to do the prepared opening statement. So three challenges, and one of them is a little bit broad, but obviously finishing the resolution and getting the funding to stop the sewage issues from Mexico is a huge situation. Another one that is being worked on is relinquishment, which actually I think is more important than most people know, and by relinquishment I mean the city taking control of primarily the Orange Avenue Corridor. Originally, the relinquishment situation included further down the strand, and I can talk about that in a moment. And then third, the sort of overarching concern that I think is far and away the most important concern is fighting as much as we can on council to help preserve local control in Coronado. And by local control, what I mean is, and it is, I admit, a very tough uphill battle to preserve local control, but again, it is fighting to preserve some form of governance where we can control things such as our zoning, which is being stripped away by the state legislature, as well as the local agencies such as Sandag and other governmental bodies. So I'm, one of the main reasons I'm really running is to work on that issue of local control and hopefully use my skills and the time that I have available, since I'm not working full-time as an attorney anymore after these 25, 26 years, is to serve on the outside agencies as a representative of Coronado. As most of you may know, the City Council has a member on Sandag, it's a full-paying member, and many other important agencies. So this is really what I look forward to trying to work on. Again, I know it's an uphill battle, but I think the fight is worth it, and we need to try to observe what we can in this town and our control in this town. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Carrie?
The top three issues that I would work on is, first is relinquishment, second, getting enough information to our residents to be able to participate truly in decision-making, and third, to assist in identifying more funding for the sewage problem down on our beaches. So first, let's talk about relinquishment. Right now, the reason we don't have it solved is the United States Navy insinuated itself into the issue at the legislature and convinced the legislature to say that even though Coronado and Caltrans had reached after several years of negotiations an agreement to turn over our portions of SR-75, just like they did to Imperial Beach and San Diego, the Navy said, "Not so fast. We want to be able to prove anything that Coronado does." Well, that's not really a win for Coronado. We're trading Caltrans as our master to the United States Navy. I am a proud veteran, but I don't think it would be any easier for us to work with the federal government than it is with Caltrans. But we can find a middle ground, and I think we need to go back to negotiations. The Navy's been pretty clear, the reason they're doing it, they're afraid we're going to do things that will slow down traffic going into the base. And although some of us might want to do that, that's not our intention for relinquishment. They don't care what we do in terms of landscaping, which is one of the big reasons we want it back. We want to be able to landscape how we want, we want to do street furniture how we want, we want it, you know, outside dining. So we need to find that middle ground with the Navy that says, "We can do all these things, we don't need your approval, but if we did want to change something in the middle of the street going to the base, then yes, you'd get to approve it." So I think that's what we need to do to solve that one. The second issue is, I am not as happy with how the city's upgrade to our website has gone. I think people don't find out soon enough that an issue they care about is going to be on the agenda, and I think we need to work on making that easier for you to track an issue, whether it's a planning, City Council, and have enough time. And then third, I think we need to encourage more cooperation for the funding issues for the sewage problem.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Okay, Marvin?
Thank you. My top three, there's a lot. My top three, underground infrastructure first, local control second, relinquishment third. Underground infrastructure, as many of you know, we just led a contract for the rehabilitation of the Parker Pump Station, a 25-plus million-dollar contract. But if we don't do something about that, 280 homes in Country Club will not be livable. And so that is underway. We hope to have it done in about 18 months, but we have got to attack our underground infrastructure first and make sure that that doesn't wreck the special field of Coronado. Local control, we are suffering at a number of corners, from Sacramento, from Sandag, from the Coastal Commission, all trying to help Coronado how to manage Coronado. And we have, we've tried to push back through legal methods, we've got some other ways. It's time for us to really engage our legislature in getting them to realize, solve statewide problems at your level, leave local problems to us, you know, empower those that help you solve problems. And so local control is something we have got to take more attention to and work on because it's affecting us at a lot of different levels. Third, relinquishment. As Carrie said, the Navy has thrown a little wrench in our relinquishment, and we need to get back with the Navy and figure out where the win solution is here. We've got to get control of these roads, and we have a project to do new landscaping in front of the shores here on 75. We sent the project to Caltrans for approval. It took 10 months for them to give us back the project and say, "Oh, here's the things we think are wrong with it." I mean, that's, we just can't keep working in that kind of environment. We got to be able to make some changes. And so we've got to get control of our roads, and the finances make sense, the council, our current council has agreed it's a good idea. We just got to get through the Navy issue here. Thank you.
Okay, Pele Aloha?
So my top three would be, I'm going to kind of combine local control as, in addition to the relinquishment, kind of in the same area, as well as the number two, the Tijuana River Valley sewage issue, and I'm going to say number three would be our community engagement accessibility. So for me, I would say for the local control, it's really understanding what are opportunities or what are not opportunities out there for us to be able to be a part of the process and change over those hands, and really understanding that and really being able to look at opportunities such as relinquishment, such as the zoning, understanding the housing, understanding people like the Commission and the San Diego Housing Federation who are really adamant on us trying to add in housing units when we don't have the capacity, and really staying on top of our state and federal legislation so we understand what that can look like for us as a city and not all boxes fit the same. Two, for the Tijuana River Valley sewage, I have worked on campaigns in Mexico, and I will tell you, it's something that you have to really stay on top of. So I want us to be more in front of that, so really working with partners and really being able to not have to say our waters are going to be dirty until past construction in 2023. So what can we do to make that more action? And I will wrap that into number three. I, when I started this process, I really was so inspired by everybody I've talked to, from groups to the department heads in our city, to individuals, to organizations, and really just allowing us as a community to be more engaged. Like Carrie, how do we do that? I started collecting data, really looking at something like a community-city heat map so we can really be more engaged and have opportunities to have a voice and help make those changes that are necessary. I'm very passionate about what I call like our long-range sustainable city planning as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for this next question, I will ask from my right to my left. If elected, what steps would you take to make Coronado a leader in environmental sustainability?
Thank you. Obviously, my background is in environmental studies. I'm very passionate about sustainability and being able to be a city that can be a role model for other cities. I think we have the bandwidth, we have the community, we have each of you to really engage. I can tell you, again, everybody's so passionate about making sure that we stay in front of everything. So I've noticed too that, like Carrie had mentioned, and as a city, we always want to say, "Oh, we can't point fingers and blame. All we can do is see what's in front of us." So really being able to take data, having people dive into abilities to stay in front of our water resource plan, we have a really outdated water resource plan, and really paying attention to our potable water. I will tell you, water will be an issue that we need to pay attention to. So I'm very vague on making sure our kids have something that they can look back and say, "Hey, we were paying attention to that for them." And I, as I said, my background has been in environmental policy, and I really want to make sure that we stay in front of it. So whatever we can do as a community to build a sustainable community, I want us to be able to be in front of that. Thank you.
Marvin?
As your Chairman of the Committee to Protect the Environment, I hope you know that I care about this issue. I also am on the Cal Cities Environmental Quality Committee and the League of National Cities Environment, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee. So I'm trying hard to find ways for us to make improvements here in Coronado. Over the last year now, we approved a sea level rise plan and a climate action plan. That's just the first step. We have to figure out now from that research what we can do to make changes. I like to think of myself as a practical environmentalist. I'm not going to tilt at windmills and try to solve the world's problems, but I'm going to figure out what we can do here in Coronado within our control. Things that we need to look at, we're going to have to replace both fire stations in the next 10 years. We need to look at solar on the top of those. I mean, that's pretty obvious to me. We may have to replace the roof on the library. Again, solar should be an option there. Solar is that place where our public buildings can get it. As we make renovations, we need to do that. We already have a policy in the city that every time we buy a new vehicle, we look to see if an electric vehicle or a hybrid vehicle is a better fit. We have a few hybrid vehicles. We don't have any fully electric vehicles right now, but you know, this is part of the review to, are we getting the right thing? I'm not interested in Coronado going out and, you know, buying the test expert thing, you know, and seeing if it works. I want us to buy stuff that will work and will contribute and use our funds that way. Things like the water recycling plant on the golf course. We tried that in the last couple of years. We ran into some glitches on cost. We need to see how we push through that. It's still on our city plan to see if we can do that, but it's very expensive. But water is the commodity of the 21st century, and so we got to figure out how we use recycled water and how we save water here in the city. Thank you.
Okay, Carrie.
We have a great many opportunities. The first one, I'll start where Marv just left off. When Coronado negotiated with Calham Water, the right to use recycled water on our golf course, that was unique. No other cities had that right because right now, Calham has the only right to serve water in any way in our city. When we worked out a deal with the Navy to build their new base in Coronado City Limits, we have a contract to use the water that comes from Navy facilities and use that to reclaim as well. So we're ahead of every other city in San Diego. Even though it's expensive, we need to move forward and get that done because that water will be within our control. Excuse me. Second of all, we finished our climate action plan, but what we left, and we did the right thing, we made it voluntary, but we sent back to staff to come up with measures that we can take. There are several that we can take that will help put us in an environmentally good place. One of the first ones is, we declined to make it mandatory, but we're investigating or should be investigating which of the community choice aggregators we should join. It will lower our electricity prices and give us more control over what kind of electricity is in Coronado. Third, we have started looking at permitting and the cost of permitting for solar. We actually have a great deal of solar in our community, but things are changing. Right now, if you want to put more than a 10-kilowatt system up, you have to use a much longer permitting process. State law just changed it and raised that, so Coronado's going to be updating our codes. We'll make it easier for you to put a battery on solar you already have or to make a little bit larger solar system so we can all be going 100% electric. Because as the state's forcing everybody to get out of any natural gas, we already have a system in place, we just need to get the regulations that match that. Because Coronados have shown, we want to drive electric cars and we want to have solar. So let's make it easier for our residents to make those choices. Thank you.
Okay, John?
Thank you so much. For me, when you're looking at environmental issues, you really need to try to find where you can have common ground, right? You have some people who have some very extreme environmental positions, they may well be right, and you have others who are very resistant to it. So three things in particular that I think are fairly easy to a certain extent to work on and important things that can help our actual environment. Infrastructure is super important, but I look at the environmental issues a little bit differently. One of the first ones that is an issue for me is that whenever we have a holiday or large crowds that we expect here in Coronado, we always end up with massive amounts of overflowing trash and trash blowing often into the bay or onto the beaches. There has to be a solution to that. I know it may cost a little bit of money, but some additional pickups, some additional containers, there has to be common sense. You know, we're smart enough and we have enough financial resources to improve that situation. It may seem minor, but when you go out on the Rotary trash pickups, it's not really minor. The trash blowing in our water is not a good thing. Another thing, after having met and spoken with Emerald Keepers a few times, is I really liked their approach, which again, is not so much judgmental, but is practical in the sense of what can we achieve? One of the things we've talked about is that many of the restaurants in town have agreed through a program to semi-ban plastics. And for me, whenever I hear about banning plastics, I say, "Well, that's a great idea, but how is that really feasible?" But if we can do it in a way where the restaurants agree and support the program, then that's something that we can really do that can help reduce plastics and actually help our environment. And the final one in my last 20 seconds, the sewage issue is frankly the largest environmental issue Coronado's faced for multiple years, decades. That, we need to use our time and our energy to push to make sure we get the final $100 billion in funding that has not yet been allocated to really...
Thank you, John.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, for the final question, and I'll start with you, John. If elected, what would you hope would be key accomplishments of the council during your years of service?
So finishing a Tijuana sewage funding, could we talk about my primary goals that I would like to achieve in my term on council, hopefully in the first term, if I'm fortunate enough to be elected by you. Another term, another issue that I would like to see done during a term is something that Carrie mentioned. I do think it's possible to have a little bit better community outreach. You know, I understand the frustration of council members when things are noticed out and nobody shows up for three or four meetings, then all of a sudden a major issue is decided and the community gets into a huge uproar for that issue. There has to be a better way to communicate with the citizens and let them know that these big, major issues are coming. I know there's restrictions from the Brown Act and certain restrictions, other restrictions as well. I do think the city manager updates are pretty good, the video ones that show what's going to happen, but fortunately enough, people just don't take the time to look at them. So there has to be some other social media and some other written communication that can help get our citizens understanding earlier what's going, what's happening. We all remember the bike lane issue, and that had been studied for a year or two before all of a sudden was a huge uproar. And then another thing, I really think, this will be my final one, is I think we can work on council as council members, having attended, you know, so many meetings, including council's meeting last night, to ensure that we set aside maybe perceptions that we're on certain teams or certain agendas and really try to work together as civilly as possible. That's been a big focus on how I want to...
That's been a big focus on how I wanted to run my campaign this time, slightly different than my campaign last time, and really reach out and try to build bridges both with the other council members and with the community. Thank you so much.
Okay, Carrie.
Well, you can tell we've done these a lot because communications has been my issue from the beginning, and I'm glad to hear other people addressing the fact that it's something that needs to happen. And I'll tell you a story. When I was elected the first time in 2004, we did not have the ability to read the agenda. It was one copy at the library. And I said, that was absurd. And so I, when I worked for the government and even my own private little law firm, I could make copies, I could scan a couple hundred pages, I offered to do it for the city for free. I said, this is nuts. It took another two years before finally that was available. When I had constituents asking me about when something would be on the agenda in the future, there used to be a two-page document that the city manager sent to city employees owning, only, and it was a calendar showing what might be on items on future agendas. So I sent it to some concerned citizens that were looking for the date that a project would be coming up so they could come, talk about it. I was, as we used to joke in the military, taken to the woodshed by the city manager saying, you can't send that out. I said, it's a government document and I do California Public Records Act request for other government agencies, I'm quite certain it's a Public Records Act, and it would be able to be released. That eventually got morphed, he decided, all right, if that's gonna happen, let's make it not be so written to employees, but to be out facing. That evolved into what people now talk about the city manager's report. It's because I thought the citizens had a right to know when something was coming up. We still aren't there yet, folks, because the problem is, they're not getting that information that says in, you know, a month, we're gonna be looking at these possible items on the agenda. And so what I'd like to happen is to have, once we start doing some planning, just like we do a quarterly progress report on outstanding projects, I'd like to have a calendar so people know this is when we're thinking about bringing these large-scale projects up. God bless you, Marv, and the other council members for last night's meeting, that was absurd, how long it went for something that nobody expected to take that long. So we've got to do a better idea of, so residents know when something they care about's gonna be on the council. And we gotta have time, certainly, not waiting three hours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Marvin?
Surprise, surprise, the most important thing in the next four years is the Parker Pump Station because it's gonna destroy part of our city if we don't get it fixed. So that's the first thing. The second thing I wanna see done is I wanna see the recycling plant coming back. We won't get it done in the next four years, but we need to get that project back going because that's important for the future of Coronado. I think relinquishment is something that we can accomplish in the next term too. As has been stated, we've gotta sit down and work with all the parties and make sure we find the right answer, but we need to get control of our streets, and I think that's doable. Local control's a longer one. The immediate challenge there though is the reasonable housing needs assessment numbers, and that's gonna be something front and center for us this next year as the state tries to force us to change our zoning in order to accommodate a nearly 10% increase in houses in Coronado. I, I don't see it specifically possible, and we have an airport that's gonna keep heights from going up, we have the Coastal Commission that restricts what you can do, and so I don't know how that's gonna work out, but it's gonna be a big issue. We're gonna have to work on that and figure out how much we can push back against the state on this. We've exhausted our legal options, but this I think is the biggest thing that we're gonna have to work with our state legislatures on to try to get some of the laws changed. So Barker Pump Station, underground infrastructure, recycling of water, relinquishment, top three. Thanks.
Piliola?
When I decided to run, I had a lot of individuals in the community kind of encouraged me to, I was a little bit nervous, but as I mentioned earlier, it was really talking to all of you and each individual groups, and it was beyond inspiring to understand as a community how much we've done. I mean, I'm including our candidates here, amazing individuals, and just really what we've accomplished and what we do as a city is phenomenal. I, I would say where I think we can probably do better is a role model city and a sustainable role model city is figuring out if we can do that a little bit more together and, and providing outlets, like Carrie said. I can't imagine for her having to go make copies, I was thinking the same thing, how do we not have a heat map? I'm researching other cities, what other cities have, and I'm like, okay, there's ways to implement, I can do it now because I'm not a city council member, but obviously once you're a city council member, you do have to go through steps and protocols to make things like that happen. But I think there are ways to work within our groups to become a city that is really truly sustainable through our reclamation for our water, for our water resource planning through Tijuana River Valley. There's a lot of things we want to do and make sure that we have the resources we need. Like, he mentions, obviously we have to pay attention to pump stations because obviously we don't want that to happen. But what can we do to provide outlets, like Carrie mentioned, to make sure that we can be in front of the problems and not behind? When I met with our different department heads, understanding this is the first time we've really done a five-year plan for our engineer and public service, it's always been a two-year, so I'm very excited to hear that we're kind of thinking a little bit more long-range so we can stay in front of the problems. So again, I, I really want us to be able to stay in front of the problems and not be reactionary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Now, we do have some time left, so I think we can entertain one question from the audience, and we'll have them answer. Marvin, Carrie, John, Piliola, and two minutes.
Thank you, council candidates for being here. There's three things that are important to me. Obviously, the other big items that you said are also important, but I care about getting a suicide prevention barrier on the bridge, it's a real fence. I care about getting a second ambulance at the K's Fire Station like we used to have years ago, and I care about getting the first five 15-story buildings at the Coronado shores retrofitted for sprinkler systems. If you can address any of those items, I'm appreciative.
Thank you so much. Public safety is, is a key issue for our city. It's one of the fundamental things a city needs to do. I'll start with the K's Fire Station because that's very near and dear to my heart since it's only a few hundred yards from, from me. We right now, as I think most of you know, we went from two basic life support ambulances 20 years ago to one advanced life support ambulance in the city. But at the K's Fire Station, Station 37, we do have a full paramedic crew that's on the truck there that responds. So everyone gets medical help immediately, the challenge is in transporting. And so we, we need to look at that, we need to figure out how we do that best. I don't know if it's another ALS ambulance or if it's a BLS ambulance or if it's doing some kind of combination with the Navy in the Silver Strand Training Complex to, to support them that maybe we can share. We gotta keep looking at that, figure out how we make sure that we have that transportability readily available. Right now, we get that from the Navy or from IB or from San Diego as all of our emergency response is a regional effort, and we, we're constantly sharing back and forth. But we, there's some challenges here, there's some costs, we gotta work through this, we have to figure out how we do it, and, and I think that's an important thing to do. Suicide bridge deterrent, I, I don't know what to say. You know, Caltrans is the people that run this. I think we just have to keep putting pressure on the fact that we need this because it affects our city, it affects lives, and, and we do the best we can to push them on. I was very disappointed in the presentation we had a month or two ago that indicated that they don't think they have money to, to do this and that they have to find money in the state. That, that to me is kind of ludicrous at this point, and so I, I don't know where that is. On the retrofitting of the shores, I, I'm not, I don't know enough about that problem and, and how the city can help with that. I'd be glad to talk to you or to other people in the choir about how, what we can do to encourage that, because that clearly, we, we can't fight fires at the top of the shores with our current equipment, and so we need to have sprinklers in there.
Thank you, Marvin. Okay, Carrie.
That's a lot, Wayne. The first is, I'm proud to have been endorsed by our Coronado firefighters, and one of the reasons was my understanding that although you like to use the term "a second ambulance in the case," actually, it's a second ambulance in the city. So it's not that there's already one in the K's and one in the Village, we have one that stays in the Village and one that's, they would like to have stay in the K's. And I support that for all the reasons that you mentioned, but what's important for everybody to understand is, it is a matter of staffing, so there's a lot of questions involved, but I think it's important for the diversity of how long it takes to get another transport to the K's when we need it. In terms of the suicide prevention from the bridge, I've been working on this for you, Wayne, for a long, long time, and I do not understand why it's taking so long. We had a commitment from our state legislatures to start looking at helping fund that, so we're gonna need to get back into the game again, figure out why that money isn't there. We had commitments at one time, so it's a matter of, I think we've just lost the legislators that were behind that, and we're gonna have to do more to try and, and get that funded. Just not having money is not the right solution. As long as we've got an agreement on what can be built, we should be able to find the money, and I would be very supportive of that effort. Third, I don't believe the city has any ability to be involved in the K's adding sprinkler systems, but I agree with Marv, if there's something that we can do to assist that in terms of permitting, in terms of way to address that, I agree, as one of our large buildings, they have to have that kind of coverage. Matter of fact, if you build so many things in town these days, you have to get it automatically, so I, I'm kind of surprised they've been able to go this long without having that. So, and the upgrades of the fire stations, I remember when we passed the rules to get the ladder truck, we were looking at space where to park things. So one of the things that I know is, is important to the, the fire department is to make sure they have training areas as well, so I look forward to that when we look at new stations. Thank you, Carrie.
Okay, John?
Thank you so much, Wayne, for that question. That is something that's extremely important to me. I am, you know, very proud to be endorsed by the Coronado firefighters as well and the only candidate endorsed by the Coronado Police Officers Association. I think it's really important, and I've encouraged them even before this election was going, and I knew that they might endorse someone, to speak out in the ten-city council and speak out in, in public as to what their view is if they think there's a public safety issue in our town. I am impressed when the firefighters association speaks out and when the four captains that I've met with, because they're not, as you might think of a union, speaking to me and saying, hey, we want more money and more money for ourselves. What they're saying is, we have some concerns about the safety of the community, and we want to ensure we have the right equipment and the right training to protect the citizens. And so that means something to me, and I think that voice needs to be heard, and that's something that I look forward to doing hopefully on council if elected. The ambulance in the K's, you know, obviously it'll have to go to a full hearing in council, but when you listen to what the captains have to say, it is disturbing and distressing that they rely so much on outside agencies to serve the population in the K's. If you have an app called Pulse Point, you can see every call that Coronado firefighters respond to, and frequently they'll have five or six, and multiple, multiple agencies coming across the bridge or from down south. And it is something we need to ensure. I think that is one thing where we cannot skim on, on how we spend our money. The other issue I want to address that you raised was the suicide prevention. That's just unacceptable where we're at with that. Politics is kind of a catchphrase, but I really believe that politics don't really stop in Coronado at the bridge anymore. You know, the politics have to be done, lobbying and working in the other bodies to get what Coronado needs. We have to spend more time working with those politicians, we have to get a plan together to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Piliola?
Thank you, Wayne, for the question. I will definitely say, I was, I was surprised, and my uncle was an ER doctor for Sharp Coronado and Chula Vista for 35 years, so I always thought we still had two ambulances. So as I started getting a pulse of the city, I mean, I think most of you might in this room know that we have one, but I will tell you, it's, not everybody realizes that. And once I started really digging into the research, doing the data, getting all the facts and figures about our responsiveness and how many ambulances we have, which is one, and for the calls, I, I was a little bit amazed at like, we need to really understand the data and be in front of that. I, I think having more service available, we do not wanna be behind in response. I, I just don't believe in that as a community. I think it's really important that we stay in front and educating our community to understand that, because I've talked to so many people and they don't realize we only have one ambulance because they hear them all and they don't always realize that they're from other locations. So really, I, I think us understanding the data behind our responsiveness is really important and being able to educate. On the mental health and the bridge, I'm, I'm an advocate for mental health, I've lost friends to that bridge, and I appreciate people like Georgia Farrell and Safe Harbor and all the work they do in our community, but we do need to push harder. It's been an issue that's been going on for so long, and I just think we have to stay in front of that. For the shores, I will say I know even the fire sprinklers to the earthquake retrofit, I know that's a big thing in the shores because when it was built. So really understanding that I don't want us to be like, oh, we should have put sprinklers in there. And so just really prioritizing, looking at the long-range plan and making sure that we stay in front of those issues is really, really important. As you talk to people, they understand what's going on, as most people would say, I can't believe for our population, we only have one ambulance. Thank you.
Okay, well, I would really like to thank each one of you for being here today.
Yeah, if they wanna stay after, if anybody wants to talk to them, have some questions, we'd appreciate it, and thank you, it was very informative. All of you, next week, we're going to be at the K's Yacht Club. We have a really interesting speaker. He grew up in the 30s in Alcatraz, his dad worked there as a warden, and he gives tours of Alcatraz, so it should be really interesting. So have a great Rotary Week.